Good evening. We will call the Town of Culpeper Planning Commission Meeting, two quarter. Call the floor, please.
Mr. Sirianni?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Flanagan?
Here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'd like to propose an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to move public hearing conditional use permit, CUP 5850-2025, to the top, to become the first of the three.
If I may interject, we need to cancel public hearing on rezoning REZ-4405-2023. There is an outstanding issue with a property owner objection that we had hoped would be resolved prior to this, but it has not been resolved, and so we are not able to hold that public hearing this evening. So I would ask that the Planning Commission strike that public hearing from the meeting agenda.
All right, so then, yes, and then I'll amend my amendment and say, strike item, the first item, first public hearing from the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to apologize to those citizens who are in attendance for that public hearing as it relates to the proposed Wawa. We had hoped to have this resolved to be able to hold the public hearing, but unfortunately we are not able to do so this evening. So there will be no public hearing on the proposed Wawa rezoning tonight.
Can we ask any questions, or not?
Not tonight. You're certainly welcome to reach out to the department and staff, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but there will not be an opportunity to discuss the case this evening.
Okay, so you can't tell us why they're not, you're not hearing it.
We have an outstanding opposition from a property owner that has not been resolved.
Did you know that prior to advertising?
We had anticipated that it would be resolved prior to the hearing.
Okay, so you went ahead and advertised and scheduled the hearing without it being resolved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Wawa people are leaving. Glad they were here for the draft.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one other thing. I know we have some folks who are in the overflow room. We do now have seating availability here in the main room if folks would like to join us in here.
Can they hear you? Oh, good, they can hear you.
All right, moving on. Is there a motion to approve? The minutes is written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll kick it off. Comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations of the audience. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any matter not scheduled for a public Would anybody like to speak about something not on the agenda that's not a public hearing? Moving on to unfinished business.
No unfinished business at this time.
New business. Public hearings allow the commission to gather information from interested citizens on the agenda items. The citizens may speak in reference to each item on the agenda for a time usually limited to three minutes. Commissioners and staff may ask questions of anyone attending the hearing. Speakers are asked not to direct questions or comments to each other. Speakers are not allowed additional time for rebuttal. This is a hearing, not a debate. Questions may be directed to commissioners, community development staff during regular office hours. We will move to public hearing conditional use permit, CUP 5850-2025, by Culpeper Renaissance.
Good evening. I'm Connie Dalton, Senior Planner, and I will present the conditional use permit application for Culpeper Renaissance Inc. Conference of Sign Plan. As part of the downtown public space improvement project, Culpeper Renaissance Inc. is seeking a conditional use permit for a conference of sign plan. The signs, also referred to as kiosk, are to be located in eight downtown parking lots managed by the Culpeper Parking Authority. The signage will include a cabinet with a map showing the downtown points of interest will be inserted, and the kiosk will be seven feet tall and about three feet wide. They will feature LED lights within the cabinet to illuminate the map. A small solar panel will extend about eight inches from the top of the post to provide power to the internal lights. The zoning ordinance allows for the approval of a conference of sign plan that establishes the time, manner, placement, materials, lighting, height, and number of signs to be approved through the conditional use permit process. As provided in the staff report, staff review the following elements: placement, landscaping, number of signs, and the approval process for placement on government property. This is an illustrative picture of the proposed kiosk to be installed. Eight kiosks are proposed to be located in eight municipal parking lots as reflected on this map. The next eight slides identify the location of the kiosk in the specific parking lot, if landscaping is to be provided, and the recommendations for bollards. These exhibits are recommended to be part of the conditions for approval. I will kind of fly through these, but if you want me to stop on a particular lot and discuss it, I can. So this is West Locust Street parking lot. This is West Culpeper Street parking lot. East Culpeper Street. East Cameron Street. East Spencer Street, the large lot. East Spencer Street, the small lot. East Davis Street parking lot. And the Triangle parking lot. In each of these, there is a pop-out box that talks about the location, how far it is from the sidewalk, whether landscaping can or cannot be installed at that particular one, and whether bollards are needed. And so it's part of the, if it's recommended for approval, we would include these eight exhibits to identify how each location installation would occur at each of the locations. There are additional standards that are required to be reviewed, and these were reviewed by staff as part of the code requirements. In effect, the proposed location of the kiosk in the municipal lots will not impact the health and safety of adjacent properties. Number two, the conference of sign package will benefit the public by providing consistent, uniform, attractive, and useful signage in a manner that enhances the streetscape and supports the community. Number three, the signage allows for the conference of plan and that the kiosk signage supports economic goals, enhances the gateways and corridors, and utilizes public grant funding to support the community goals. And number four, the signs are not located in the watershed protection district. This summary is a summary of the six potential conditions that have been identified for inclusion in a recommendation for approval. Number one, the short version of it is kiosk signs must be in general conformance with the eight site location maps. Number two, the height of the kiosk shall not exceed eighty-four inches or seven feet. Number three, the signs may only advertise general business activity. Number four, signs may be refaced but not enlarged. Five, any additional future signage must conform to town code. And number six, the memorandum of understanding must be executed, including any guidance provided by the town manager and/or legal counsel. So the next steps on this process would be a public hearing before town council, which has been scheduled for September 9th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is here this evening as well, Jessica Jenkins.
What exactly is the execution of the memorandum?
Memorandum of understanding.
What does that all about?
It's in your staff report as an exhibit, and it explains the relationship between the town and the Culpeper Renaissance Inc., and who's responsible for what, and the, how the kiosk will be maintained, and the ownership. So it's an understanding since it's sort of a little bit of a partnership, right, to have these located on the town's property.
So it's a contract between the town and CRI?
I would say yes.
Essentially, yeah. It outlines who's responsible for what.
Is this a MOU? It starts headed with the word narrative?
That is the narrative, the application. When the application came in, that was the description. The MOU would be the last page of your packet of this.
Does anyone else have questions for staff?
Got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to commend staff. I think this is one of the most comprehensive and well-presented reports that we've seen.
We'll take that. Thank you. It's been a collaborative effort always.
Any other comments? Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, with this being said, we will start with the public hearing for the conditional use permit. Anybody like to come up and speak about the conditional use permits for CRI and its Very good. Moving on to public hearing, Town Ordinance Amendment, Case O.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, we'll have to close the public hearing. I forgot to gamble it open and closed. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I move we forward the conditional use permit application to council with a recommendation to approve. I was going to base it on findings of fact, but I'll just say the findings of fact is laid out in the staff report on pages five, and with the conditions indicated on six.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public hearing, Town Ordinance Amendment, O. 2025-002, amendment to completely replace the entirety of town code, Chapter 22 subdivisions, and town code, Chapter 27 zoning with a new town code, Chapter 27 Unified Development Ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try and give a brief overview of this. We've been talking about this for quite some time, and so wanted to go back to the start and what the goals that were identified in their request for proposals that went out to a consultant. The goals were identified as restructuring the zoning ordinance into a streamlined, clear, and user-friendly document that should include combining the subdivision zoning ordinances. A goal of updating the ordinances to fully comply with all of the zoning and subdivision provisions required by the Code of Virginia. Updating our definitions in both the subdivision and zoning ordinances to enhance clarity and reduce the need for interpretation. Updating the development standards for each zoning category and approval process for site plans and other permit applications. And have a zoning ordinance that reinforces the vision and goals of the town's comprehensive plan. And all of this incorporating public input from various stakeholder groups, including but not limited to town council, the planning commission, town staff, local citizens, business owners, and members of the general development community. So those were outlined when we put out a request for proposals to a consultant. This was back in 2019 when funding was approved for this. Duncan Associates was selected as the consultant for this project. The following year, there was formed a zoning and subdivision ordinance advisory committee. In February of 2022, there was a joint presentation to town council and the planning commission on the progress to date. On February of 2024, the town department put out a hub site on the town website, which had summary tables of the draft zoning uses and maps, and the ability to receive citizen comment and citizen feedback at that stage. In January of this year, the start of January, we put out the full draft development ordinance for review and looked for comment and feedback from the public at that time. Since that time, we've had overview presentations to town council, to the planning commission, to the Joint Board of Zoning Appeals, to the Chamber of Commerce, as well as to Culpeper Renaissance Inc. We've held two public hearings before the planning commission, two public hearings before town council. Town council conducted a special meeting to discuss the ordinance, draft ordinance as well. The town council committee, at their three P committee, has discussed this on four separate occasions this year. The planning commission has held six work sessions addressing the unified development ordinance. We've had seventeen public information open house sessions, and in the subsequent draft, we've had so far three question and answer sessions on the draft UDO. So looking at what the code is, what it's proposing, the consistencies with the current code, we're remaining consistent in terms of our minimum residential lot sizes, widths, and setbacks, our landscaping requirements, our historic district overlay, our flood hazard areas, our subdivision design and improvement standards, the majority of our policies and procedures, our violations, penalties, and enforcement, as well as our nonconformities. These are all remaining consistent with our existing code. Where we're seeing changes, we've got some changes that relate to changes in state code, and so what we're doing there is we're updating our wireless facility regulations and our watershed protection overlay to bring these in line with state code changes that have occurred. We've also got changes that stem from current best planning practices, and so these ones are focused on increasing our required parking for single-family residential development, simplifying our uses and use table, increasing the permissiveness of our commercial uses within these definitions, as well as providing definitions and specific regulations for short-term rentals. The third category of changes that we've got are essentially the ones, as described, to reflect the desired future for Culpeper. And to achieve that, what we've proposed is a revamping of our zoning district categories, the introduction of building types, the introduction of form-based code, which would apply to our mixed zone and non-residential development, the allowance of accessory dwelling units or backyard cottages by right, the differentiation between home offices and home-based businesses to allow greater flexibility for some commercial activities that don't impact residential neighborhoods to take place in homes, the regulation of location for drive-through facilities and fuel pumps, as well as administrative modifications. I want to focus on two of these in particular that we've received the most question and comment on, just for a moment. First is the introduction of building types. And what this is, is this is where we get into the form-based code, where we actually are looking at the structure of the buildings. We're looking at the location of the buildings on the lots and being a little bit more prescriptive in terms of where they're located. This is largely set about with a goal of trying to preserve the character that we have within town here. It looks to help to create a more walkable community by setting buildings up a little bit closer to the front property lines, by shifting parking to the rear of properties, creating more transparency in the buildings themselves so that we have more interaction between the pedestrian realm and the interiors of the buildings themselves. Furthering this is the introduction of the form-based code for these mixed zones and residential development. And so this is where we look to have certain consistencies. So we have specific types of roofs that are defined, specific types of entrances to buildings that are defined, and guidelines, or not guidelines, rather, standards that would govern how these would look and feel so that we have that consistency. Part of that is also related to the materials that are being used for the different building types, so that we have standards that are set. All the pictures on the right are taken from examples here within town to provide local examples of the different building types and the different material types that could be placed upon the different buildings to ensure, again, as I said, that we have that consistency of form. So that was the overview of the code and the change. We do also have two particular property owner requests related to the zoning map. The first is related to 2002 Orange Road. This is an existing office that is zoned currently residential. The three parcels that consist of the office and its parking lot were proposed by the commission to be rezone to neighborhood commercial mixed, but the fourth parcel that is undeveloped was proposed to remain residential as it's currently zoned and shown on the future land use map. The property owners requested that all four be retained with the same zoning designation, all have that neighborhood commercial mixed zoning designation. I'd recommend that, if the chair will indulge me, that I show the two here. We open the public hearing, and then the commission can discuss these two requests during the commission discussion time.
Very good.
The second one is 226 West Scanlon Street. This is the parcel that is surrounded by Culpeper Baptist Church on the corner of Scanlon and West Streets. As you can see, I'm sorry, Scanlon and Blue Ridge, yes. As you can see, this parcel is currently zoned residential. One was proposed for residential suburban. The property owners have requested that they be zoned to residential mixed to be more consistent with the neighborhood commercial mix that's surrounding them in the form of the church. So again, happy to discuss this in greater detail with the commission when we get to commissioner deliberations. So the next steps following this evening, we will be conducting the public hearing this evening to hear citizen comments, citizen feedback. Planning commission will then have deliberation and ideally be providing a recommendation to town council. We still have eight additional public information sessions on the UDO, time for the public to drop in, ask questions about the UDO more broadly, or more specifically about their individual properties. We're happy to answer those questions, leading up to a public hearing before town council on the 9th of September. And that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
I have one question about the constant, I mean, I understand that this is obviously a fluid process, but did we, when we advertised this public hearing, did we advertise a map?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Part of the state code requirements is that we have a map. So the cards that went out had a tiny URL on it that provided a link to a map of the entire town that showed the proposed zoning as well as the existing zoning.
Okay, and so as we look at, there may be more information brought to light for us this evening from the public. We've obviously just seen two more. As long, I just want to be clear that there's an understanding that we recognize that this is obviously not a like, you know, lock the door, shut out the lights process, that we recognize that there will be properties that we will continue to be, you know, alerted that there is an issue. We're dealing with thousands of properties. And this idea that, but if we have advertised a map for public hearing, if we made fundamental changes to that map in between this public hearing and council's public hearing, you know, are we going to affect the clock? Are we going to have to go back?
If the planning commission is making action on their recommendation as it relates to specific properties stemming from property owner requests, then I don't believe that that impacts the clock in any way. It could certainly still proceed to council for council deliberation.
It's not like we're dealing with a frozen map?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what I hear you saying is, the map of today, and the recommendation would follow, and the map may change for town council?
Again, the planning commission is going to be making a recommendation to town council, and that recommendation may include these changes to the map. Essentially, the map is a recommendation from the planning commission to town council.
Well, what about the additional inquiries that come in between closing of this deliberation and the hearing?
If the council, if the planning commission has made a recommendation, essentially those inquiries or those requests would be conveyed to council as part of their public hearing on the application, on the case.
They'll make the decision.
They would, in that instance, they would make the, if we receive them prior to the work session, conceivably, we could bring them to the planning commission at the work session to make recommendations as well. But if it's subsequent to a planning commission work session, there's not another opportunity for the planning commission to meet before town council holds their public hearing.
So the work session would be our last look?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing for the Town Ordinance Amendment, Case 02025-002, of the Unified Development Ordinance. There's a sign-up sheet.
We have no speakers signed up, so we'll simply have to open the floor.
Can we have the first person who would like to speak? Please come forward and state your name and address.
I apologize for the print. I'll see if I printed it in black and white. But if you'd like a crystal, you'd better. Oops. Maybe you'd like a black and white.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joyce Gilman Hughes, and I live at 1814 Orange Road here in Culpeper, and it's in the town limits. My concern is the area directly around my neighborhood, and if you look on page two, that entire area is residential, traditional, zoned, and the red area is the area that I'm particularly interested in because I live there. Most of these lots are relatively small. My lot is about a quarter of an acre. Some of them are a little bit larger. If you look on page three, you'll see that at 1824, there is a building behind 1822, and this, when it was zoned, was allowed to have an auxiliary dwelling unit. Part of the auxiliary dwelling unit is to maintain the character of the single-family neighborhood. And so these are the houses, my house included, and the house on the front is the auxiliary building. And that house sucks up most of the energy of that lot. An auxiliary dwelling can only have a maximum of two occupants because it's basically like a mother-in-law house, or, you know, someone who comes, is part of the family. And by definition, an auxiliary house is part of the family unit of the primary residence. So on page five, you can see the new auxiliary dwelling as compared to other houses on my street or my area. Now, I was told that the mother-in-law house or the auxiliary house could be a multifamily dwelling, and that meant that each house could be its own different family, not a related family.
Can we summarize, please, the three minutes? This is already passed.
Excuse me? So I would like for that area not to become residential, multiple use, just that little tiny strip. Now, people can build a cottage for their in-laws or for their son or whatever, but it should maintain the character of our little neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the handouts.
I'll be happy to hand them.
Would the next person like to come up and speak? Anyone else like to speak about the unified draft ordinance? Please state your name and address.
Jessica Amos, 801 Southeast Street. You guys have heard enough from me with my attendance at meetings and work sessions. but I wanted to take the opportunity on the record to say that this was a heavy lift, and witnessing y'all's discussions and very thoughtful, you know, piecing of this UDO, it was, it was hard work, so I just want to say thank you. And I'll say thank you on behalf of my neighbors on Southeast Street, several of whom are here tonight, so, thank you very much, and same with staff, too.
Thank you very much. The next person who would like to speak, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address, or affiliation.
There you go.
All right, Sarah Farmley, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. We would like to thank the commission for its work on this project. We would also like to highlight a few components of the UDO that we find especially beneficial to the community. Firstly, we would like to commend the inclusion of rooftop solar and ground-mounted solar as an accessory structure in residential areas, with of course, some common sense rules guiding placement. Distributed solar is an important component of Virginia's clean energy portfolio and allows residents to achieve energy independence at a time when data centers are causing power bills to increase exponentially. Secondly, we appreciate efforts to increase the diversity of housing options, especially within the commercial and neighborhood mixed-use districts. Having not only sufficient housing, but also having different housing types is crucial for maintaining affordability within a community. Thirdly, we applaud the recent change of creating a data center overlay district. Limiting data center development to the parcels where that use has already been approved will help the town of Culpeper maintain a diverse portfolio of businesses. We have already seen and loudened where data centers are replacing existing commercial and flex industrial buildings, many of them still occupied by local businesses. By setting strong limits on data center growth, Culpeper will help protect the character of the town and prevent the community from becoming overrun with industrial data centers and their associated transmission infrastructure. This is not a solution looking for a problem. This is a needed protection for residents and businesses of Culpeper. Finally, we appreciate the Planning Commission hearing the East Street community and their desire to preserve the historic neighborhood. Had the comprehensive plan been updated prior to the UDO, the desire of the community to protect East Street may have been more clearly stated. That being said, the members of East Street have worked hard to ensure that this historic landmark will have every chance of being maintained in the future, and we thank you for listening to them. And thank you again for your work on this project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
See, I'm holding off till the last. Hi, Sarita Thaw, 506 Blue Ridge, as you all know. So, as you all know, I've read many, many drafts of the ordinance and have seen it develop over many, many months. I think there are a lot of things that have been improved with comments from the public and from one another on the Planning Commission and the council and staff, and we all appreciate the tolerance and time that everybody has given. I would just hope that as you move this through the rest of the process, that you take into consideration all of the effort that has been made, and that you do prudent deliberation and make sure that your recommendations do reflect the well-being of the community. Thank you.
All right, we're ready for the next speaker. Is there anyone in the overflow room who would like to speak?
I'm Lynn Kelsey, and I do want to thank you all for what looks like you've spent a lot of time and hours trying to prepare the changes. And, Mr. Hopewell, thank you for taking my emails at the last minute, but, so, we asked that you consider if the church, the Baptist church on the corner of West Street and Scanlon Street, if that gets rezoned to commercial, that you would consider the lot on the corner there, upzoning that to, what was it, RX, the residential, a little bit more dense? I think that would make a nice, a better buffer between the commercial and the residential, which is across both streets, so that that corner lot, which is my mother's, is not surrounded completely, it's all, it will be surrounded completely by commercial, which would be the church, and two streets. And then, of course, this, the, the road that accesses the church forms the other two lot lines for my mother's lot. But, so I thank you for considering that because I think that I wouldn't want to see that lot left as a low-density residential when the entire block has a non-residential zoning. I just, I appreciate you all considering that, and, you know, thank you because I think that would, it would just make that lot very awkward. There are no plans, of course, to redevelop, but just in the long term, I think it would be better for, for that plan. But anyway, you all have my, our letter, my sister wrote a letter, too, so I appreciate you all reading those letters and looking at them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Paige Kelsey Wessel. I'll just reiterate my sister's comments. We both wrote a letter concerning my mother's lot. As you can see, it's the only lot that's singled out as a different zoning in that entire block. Right now, we, we're right next to the Baptist church. Love it. It's a very nice Baptist church, great minister. We enjoy listening to the kids, but that zoning is more of a commercial zoning, it's not really a residential zoning. And so, if it does get a higher, or higher-density zoning, we would appreciate your consideration in including our mother's lot, so, you know, it's not singled out as completely different from the higher-density zoning. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, for me?
Yes, what's the acreage?
One acre.
One acre.
My mother's lot's one acre.
Thank you.
I don't know about the church. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing?
I'm Teresa Geisting. My husband and I live at 202 Gardner Street, and I want to thank you for taking into consideration our comments regarding our neighborhood. Specifically, my husband was concerned about the area across Sperryville Pike, the, it's a huge open area that was proposed to be NX, but you have designated now as RX, which allows for quite a lot of, a wide range of housing options there. In addition, I think our property has been, our property and the neighbors along Gardner Street have been designated as RT, which I appreciate. My concern still remains with five parcels that are on Sperryville Pike. One of them is at 405 Sperryville Pike, that's a very large property, and those properties are designated to be NX, which allows for a whole range of uses, commercial, multifamily development, and the areas around our neighborhood were still remaining RX. That was the last I looked at the map. I didn't know if the map has changed since I last looked. But anyway, the properties in our neighborhood that are still designated RX are small parcels, and I don't understand why those areas are being designated for RX, which allows for multifamily properties. It, they are small houses, small lots, and I'm particularly concerned about the property that is adjacent to ours, that is quite a bit of space, that could be used for a multifamily development, which actually then destroys the single-family nature of the property. The person that owns that property is quite influential in the town, and I believe they stand to benefit financially from an NX zoning, or RX zoning. Those are my thoughts, and I hope you will take that into consideration. There are five properties along Sperryville Pike that are supposed to be designated NX, and I just wish that you would consider making those RT as our street is, and hopefully the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Last call. Public hearing is closed.
Go back to the two.
Certainly, as noted, we have the, the two zoning map requests, in particular, we heard from, from two of those related to the one property owner, so potentially we can discuss the West Scanlon Street property first, and again, I leave it to the commission to deliberate, and staff is happy to provide any information as desired by the commission.
I mean, I do know as part of this process, I mean, we essentially went back to church properties and designated them with the NX.
Correct.
But there's nothing restricting a church from being in an R.
There is. Community assembly is not permitted in the residential zoning districts.
All right, but the Baptist church is currently sitting on R1 and R3.
Correct.
So it's?
In the new zoning, or, in the draft UDO, community assembly, which would include religious institutions, is not permitted within the residential districts. That's why you saw, we went through and designated the church properties in town as largely the NX, the neighborhood commercial.
I see that zoning as being just specific to that use. It's not really commercial, it's just to accommodate the fact that a church is there, and the rest of that neighborhood characteristic is RS, or is it R?
RS.
Yeah, it is RS.
This?
And the residents on that lot there is consistent with the neighborhood character, is not at all disruptive with the neighborhood character, and there's really a transition zone between the church property, which is not developed commercial, it's just a church and the area, I mean, you can see it right there, the area around there.
Part of what exacerbates this situation is that it's currently, the church property's currently a split-zone parcel, that we're seeking to remedy that situation and proposing the NX for the entirety of the parcel.
But again, we have, the, we have an issue that it could be solved in two different ways, right? So you have essentially what would become a non-conforming use, a church or assembly on a residential, right, zone, right? So you could either allow churches, I mean, churches now are allowed in an R1, R3. Couldn't we just carve out churches versus, right, I mean, because you, within, I mean, you basically are making a commercial designation. It's not a residential designation, NX is a commercial designation. So, I mean, there are, right, so the two ways to solve it are either change the definition or, or change the map.
Well, I guess to take a step back, what is it that we're trying to solve?
Well, basically, we're creating a non-conforming use in the church. If we, if we did like to like and pulled the church property over as split RS, RX, then we would have a non-conforming use.
Correct.
Right, but the, right, and so, that's all I'm saying. So, but again, this is a church. There is no anticipation that this would be anything other than a church, but if at some point it became something other than a church, is it, is that, are any of these churches, or any of these properties, especially the churches that are located specifically within residential neighborhoods, would it make more sense if that property reverted to residential use versus some sort of, you know, mixed-use commercial?
That's ultimately, you know, the commission to determine. We've identified, as you noted, these properties, again, largely because they have the uniquely civic building type, the church building type on them, which doesn't really lend them to easy transformation to anything other than that religious use.
I've seen what Mr. Clemens is saying, but the churches are pretty much developed as commercial when you consider the amount of parking spaces that are on the, on the properties, and essentially the, the church is operating as a commercial entity, albeit a not-for-profit.
I guess that's fair. I mean, you could also say that a church with an RX designation could then do multifamily, which may also not be in the characteristic of the surrounding property. I mean, I mean, right, if the, right, if the church came in as RX and then sold the property for redevelopment?
And the NX would allow multifamily as well.
Right. So what I'm saying is, it's not a solution, though, necessarily, to keep it residential. Because, but I guess most of these church properties, if zoned residential, would come in as residential high-density, based on the nature of the properties now.
Again, the nature of the property, to Mr. Flanagan's point, I think, is more commercial in nature than residential in nature.
Yeah, right, okay, that makes sense. They're never going back to, that, right, you're not going to put single-family homes back on the lot where the, where the Baptist church sits now.
Unlikely.
Unlikely.
Or speculate that if the church was to move, that it would become an apartment building. That probably is very unlikely.
I mean, I appreciate that we, that, I mean, I definitely appreciate the family letting us, I mean, this is, you know, this has obviously been a very complicated process, and it really, I mean, each individual lot has its own story to tell, for sure.
Is there an appetite to move this, these two lot discussions to the work session? No. That's why I asked if there was an appetite. I mean, we can do this on live TV. I'm in favor of granting the owner's request.
I think if we're going to do that, we should let the other, the folks on the neighboring residential sections give them an opportunity to chime in and render their opinions as to what that's going to do to the neighborhood character, because there was this pretty strong vociferous response from Blue Ridge, the Blue Ridge Residential Group previously, that they did not want that to be zoned to higher-density development potential. So, that one property there, yes, it's true that it's, you know, that it's, the rest of the block is commercial, but it's in the commercial that it's in the sense of being used by a church. There aren't, so it's, so it's kind of, to make that whole block the same color is not achieving any really, any real functional purpose.
Yeah, it is. It's making sense.
No, it's just making the block blue.
Yeah. What's wrong with that?
But, yeah.
Because that one plot becomes eligible for, say, and who knows, down the road for an apartment building, and that affects the character of that neighborhood, which otherwise is completely residential, except for the church.
But that's across the street.
The church is not a 7-Eleven store, it's not a, you know, it's not what we think of as a center of commercial activity, has a very specific purpose, and it fits into a residential, atypically for a commercial building, it fits into a residential area very nicely.
You know the way I feel, something in the middle of an area, that's zone, one one.
way shouldn't be zoned something else. And that makes exact sense to zone it the same as the church.
All right, but can I, I just want to chime in to your point, John. If we were standing in the middle of the intersection at Scanlon and Blue Ridge, and we did a full 360-degree turn, everything else we would see would be gray. Is that right?
That's true, that's true.
Yeah. So I appreciate your, I mean, I definitely appreciate your concern and line of thought throughout this entire process, and I'm using it myself. And so when I look at that map, I actually see gray, not blue.
But the whole blue section should be gray then.
Well, you're right, so.
You mean green? I don't see any...
Green, not gray.
Well, just to clarify, the top-left map is our existing zoning, which shows this parcel zoned R1.
Oh, yeah.
The adjoining church is a mix of R1 and R3. The map below that shows the future land use map, which shows this parcel designated or intended for low-density residential, with the church shown as an institutional designation. The top-right shows our current proposed zoning, which has this as the RS designation for this property, the NX, the neighborhood commercial mix for the church. And then the bottom-right shows the property owner request for the residential mix for this particular property. And we've got then the aerial in the middle, which shows the wooded lot with the home on it. We wanted to provide the same information that the commission has been using for your contemplation on other properties.
It's, for this point, I mean, it's my recommendation that we would keep that as we have designated it previously, that it would come in as RS. And understanding, of course, if somebody were to redevelop the entire block of the church, that this would probably get pulled in as part of that process.
Rezoning application can't be made.
Yeah, right. I mean, again, this, we're not locking the door on future development, we're just literally painting a picture, in some cases, of what is there. And that's a beautiful old house there now, clearly a single-family house.
If that's converted to NX, Andrew does that, does the current use become non-conforming?
The request for the property is RX.
RX, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry, excuse me. So it wouldn't even be the same as the, I see it's, yeah, it would still be, it still wouldn't be the same zoning classification as the rest of the block around it. It would be orange as opposed to blue.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I agree with James. Go ahead, it's worth it.
What did you say in the end?
I think that it should stay as it was, it's RS, yes.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, may I poll the commission for their recommendation? Mr. Clemens?
RS.
Ms. Schmidt? Mr. Sirianni?
I don't know. I like, I can understand both. I don't have a problem with either way.
Ultimately, I'm looking for the commission to take a position, just so we can know what we're sending to Town Council.
You don't need a unanimous, do you?
I don't, so are you choosing to abstain?
Yes.
Mr. Pitt Simmons?
I'm going to go with RS, and the strongest argument I can think of is that if we're going to change potentially the character of that section of that neighborhood, then there should be an opportunity for the other residents to speak to that. I mean, I don't, it's, I don't want to be arbitrary about saying, no, you can't change, but if we're going to, it's going to change, there should be an unfair, it would be to delay the process for a while and give the other residents a chance to chime in.
I can.
I have the opinion too, I'll grant the request.
Okay. We have three who are stating preference to see it retained, so we're going to look to retain it as far as the recommendation to council. The second request, related to 2002 Orange Road, happy to answer any questions the commission has as they deliberate on this request.
My first question is, that, that one sliver that is RS, could that be developed as a, I mean, is it wide, is it big enough?
There, you can see the two properties south of it is a lot with essentially the same dimensions that has a single-family home on it. It's tricky to see in terms of... Let's see, just right here.
Oh, I see two down.
This lot, yes.
The office on 50B17, that's an office building, right?
Correct.
That's the one that's referred to. How does that compel the department to rezone the two properties adjoining it to...
Essentially, the parking lot for that, that office building is on those properties.
Okay, so that, all three of those, in effect, are developed NX?
Correct. And that was the commission's rationale with changing that from the residential current zoning.
Right, otherwise it's legal non-conforming.
Correct.
Oh, I see, right, there's the photograph, right. Is 50B15 big enough to develop as a residential?
That was the question that Mr. Clemens had just asked, and what I observed is the parcel.
I see, I see. Yeah, I see that there's the sliver and there's the building.
All right, and just to be clear, I mean, I appreciate the, you know, the property owner's letter and letting us know about this. As I mentioned earlier, you know, every one of these lots has its unique features. The letter mentioned that the, I mean, it's basically a grass parcel now, that the church is using that for Easter egg hunts, trunk or treats. I mean, this is part of the, seems to be part of the concern. There is nothing in an RS designation that would prohibit a church from having an Easter egg hunt on an RS parcel?
Correct, because that's not the use of the parcel, so, again, they could still certainly use it for that sort of recreational activity.
It's not an assembly.
It's not an assembly in that instance, no.
All right, okay. So there's no harm being done by the RS designation in terms of specifically as it is laid out in the letter? There wouldn't be prohibited uses?
Correct.
Thank you. And this one is designated NX because, primarily because of the existing commercial...
We have the existing non-conforming that essentially we're remedying.
Right. And then, again, it's another one of those where the NX designation of the church property behind it gives the impression that this is a bigger NX area than...
Correct, they're really two separate entities.
Right.
There's the church that is behind, and then there's the four parcels that are under common ownership. Three of them along Orange Road, one behind the other parcel. Three of them have either the specific office building or the supporting infrastructure in the form of the parking. The fourth one does not have any of that infrastructure. Currently is shown residential within the future land use map as well.
Some severely rugged terrain. It'd be a challenge, no matter what, to build on that lot.
Well, the argument made is this, that it forms an actual unit, and it should all be zoned the same. And the counterargument is that, that's not the case. The three are forming a unit, and the fourth one is available as RS. The area is previously zoned RS, the principal has been like to like, the future use vision is residential, and so there's no real justification for, is the counterargument for classifying that as commercial use. So those are the two sides.
And there, I mean, and there is, I mean, there is residential, are you right, I mean, we're looking at commercial on one side, but we're definitely looking at residential on the other side. You've got two kinds of neighbors.
There's residential on both sides of these properties.
Right, 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 middle block.
So essentially, it's serving as a buffer lot between the residential and the commercial uses is what it does.
And, you know, so back to sort of a point that Ian made earlier, this is another one of those where I don't, I can't see that we would recommend changing this from RS to NX as part of a process that did not also include further outreach to those neighbors, and giving those neighbors an opportunity. So there's nothing that precludes an applicant, at some point in the future, from asking for a rezoning here, but as part of this process, I would be inclined to keep it RS.
It goes the way that we planned it.
Mr. Chairman, hearing, no further discussion. May I poll the commission? Mr. Clemens?
RS.
Ms. Schmidt?
RS.
Mr. Sirianni?
RS.
RX.
Thank you. And so that brings us to planning commission deliberation of the UDO as a whole. Happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
I ask a question about the issue that was raised with respect to the ADUs. So this would require, these are under the new code permitted by right under all the residential classifications. So to, this would be a major revision to the draft ordinance to take that up. And the ADU is an issue that's been debated, discussed, debated, deliberated at considerable length. So I'm guessing, I'm, this is an interesting perspective, this comes very late in the process, has been discussed at length. And there isn't new information in here that would, that would kick off a reconsideration or a rediscussion of the issue.
I would follow that up, Andrew. I mean, some of this, of course, in these decisions operated at levels well above the town. I mean, and a lot of this ADU conversation is going on in Richmond. So, I mean, could you, you know, what is your take of where the latest is on that?
Sure. This most recent session of the General Assembly, there was not any legislation proposed related to accessory dwelling units. However, last year's General Assembly did have some legislation that was introduced that would make accessory dwelling units permitted by right in all residential zoning districts across the entirety of the Commonwealth. There's been increasing pushes towards that in recent years, and so I would suspect that that may well come back again in future years, in terms of something that would compel localities to permit accessible dwelling units, or, I'm sorry, accessory dwelling units. I think that the town would be well-served getting ahead of that by having specific language in place related to the accessory dwelling units by right. That way, we would essentially be grandfathered in, for lack of a better description, potentially, depending on how they craft the state legislature, the language coming out of the state legislature. But we have a better shot, at least, to ensure that we have some of the protective provisions that we have in the current draft as it relates to parking, as it relates to size, as it relates to occupancy. So ultimately, it's up to the commission in terms of their recommendation in Town Council. But from my professional perspective, I think, I don't think the question of by right ADUs is going to be going away at the state level, as there's an increasing push for the provision of affordable housing throughout the Commonwealth.
And because we are a delinquent state, if state-level legislation is passed prescribing ADU permission in all residential classifications, we are obliged to conform. We don't have the discretion to not to conform.
Correct.
There's one thing about ADUs, like this particular one, is 1,000 square feet. You can't go over 1,000 square feet. Well, 1,000 square feet is bigger than the house that's in front of it. It's only 800 square feet. Should we have 1,000 square feet maximum, or no larger than the primary resident?
We certainly could do that. What's also a little tricky in this instance is that this structure is also proposed with the garage as part of the same structure.
But that's not part of the 1,000 square feet.
That is, as long as there's no connection between the garage to the dwelling area, and this instance...
The main dwelling, main dwelling.
No, to the accessory dwelling unit area.
It's attached, the roof is, you can see it, it's attached.
Correct, it can be attached and within the same structure, but there's not permitted to be internal access.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
This instance is one where we've reached out to the property owner, because this went through the process of a conditional use permit before the town. We were shown one set of plans there, they submitted a different set of plans to the county building office that shows an internal access, and so we have reached out to them to let them know that they would be in violation of their conditional use permit if it's constructed as they have submitted to the county.
Also, didn't we require them to put a lawn in the front yard? Instead of, it's all...
Correct, they were in violation in terms of the amount of paved parking vehicle accommodation they had in the front in that instance as well, that we, as part of the conditions, we're seeking to remedy as well.
But they're not finished building anyway, so...
Correct. And so they're required essentially to pave to the back as well, and... So this is an ongoing situation in terms of this particular instance that we're seeking to resolve. There are some issues with it as it's currently moving forward that we're seeking to remedy, because it has deviated from what was approved.
Gotcha, good idea, yeah.
Actually, that was the good thing about the conditional use permit, is we were able to have those.
Well, we still have, essentially, we've carried over those conditions, and they're now part of the zoning ordinance in terms of the requirements for the accessory dwelling unit. So we're not losing those by making the accessory dwelling unit by right. There's still essentially required components to permit that accessory dwelling unit.
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion. Mr. Sirianni, does anybody have anything to add? Ms. Schmidt?
No, this is just not what was explained to us to start with, improve this thing.
Right, yeah, even under existing, yeah, you have to trust but verify.
Oh, right, that particular ADU, yeah, I remember that too. I move that we, the commission, forward the UDO in its present draft to the Town Council with our recommendation to adopt.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank staff for all of the extra time that this process required, and thank the public for all of the input, that this is not a, this is not a sort of a project that's tackled by five people sitting at a table. It literally affects everyone, and that all of the work we've done would have led to maybe... to maybe, you know, not nearly as useful an outcome without all of the feedback we received from the public throughout this process. So, I mean, I also, I guess, would mention that, you know, that if we send this, as we send this to council, that, I mean, I think that staff has done an excellent job with the staff report, but that, that there, that we should definitely emphasize that the UDO process was initiated by council in an effort to update town code, that the new zoning map's been developed by the staff and planning commission with continuous feedback from the public, and reflects an understanding that the town's approaching 100% build-out, and the demand for redevelopment should be encouraged in areas designated for such development in the comprehensive plans, future land use map. All in an effort to preserve existing neighborhoods, and that the permitted use section of the UDO has been written to be more flexible and understandable for new business owners, and designed to allow for the preservation of existing architecture in the downtown area.
Thank you. I'll be ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Other business?
No other business at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Any follow-up items, Mr. Director?
No follow-up items at this time.
Planning director updates.
I'll simply echo Mr. Clemens' appreciation for the time and effort that the planning commission has put in, and the members of the public who have come forward and shared perspectives. I wholeheartedly agree that we have a far stronger and far better document here as a result of everyone's efforts.
Thank you. Commission member discussion, Mr. Sirianni?
I just got a general question. Seeing we took the blah-blah off the agenda, when you asked for public comments for everything not on the agenda, could those people have come up and talked about blah-blah?
It was on the agenda until it was struck. I don't know.
Yeah, we already accepted the agenda with it being struck.
I do not know.
I'm just curious, seems like we could have let them talk, but I didn't think about it until just a few minutes ago, so. Okay, that's the only question I had.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Kudos to all concerned, and especially the public for their scrutiny. They make us do better work, keeping an eye on us and giving us their input. The department is tireless, and I always come away from the discussions with my fellow commissioners a little bit smarter than I was when I started the discussion, so thanks to all of you as well.
Go that, thank you.
Mr. Clemens?
I have nothing.
I want to thank everybody who attended, everybody who's put in, out, has given us things to think about. We started out with something, and you guys are the reason it's so much better than it was. Thank you. And, meeting is adjourned.